Would everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and then we'll follow with a prayer. Jason?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Victor, would you lead us in prayer, please?
Yes. Father God in heaven, we thank you for this beautiful day and this time that you've allowed us to come together under your name. We ask that you will provide the right person, the right people, the right organization to fill up the Valley Three Theater today. We ask for your guidance in all things in the mighty name of your son, Yeshua. Amen.
Amen. Montevista City Council has met at council chambers located at 95 West First Avenue or First, Montevista, Colorado, 811-44, where we called the meeting to order and Councilor Sagala made the motion to move the April 6, 2023 council meeting to Sky High Complex and reopen the meeting at 6:15 PM. Councilor Locke seconded, motion carried unanimously. Do we have any modifications to the agenda?
Yes, sir. Yes, we have one modification to the agenda. We need to add J1, Resolution 2023-4, Resolution of the City of Montevista. In opposition to statewide land use and zoning. Preemption in Senate Bill 23-213.
So moved. It's been moved and seconded to add J1, Resolution 2023-04 to the agenda. Is there any discussion?
Do we have copies of that resolution?
I emailed those to you on Tuesday afternoon.
I didn't, I'm afraid I missed it. It wasn't in the packet, so I didn't see it.
No, it was a separate email that we received on Tuesday morning.
Do you have copy here?
I have.
We can move on with the vote.
Sorry, Jason, what did you say?
We can move on with the vote, I mean, we're just adding it to the agenda at this point.
Is there any discussion? You need a?
Councilor Howard?
Aye.
Councilor Locke? Councilor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sagala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to modify the agenda, adding J1, Resolution 2023-4.
Okay, we need approval of consent agenda minutes of regular meeting from March 16, 2023 and review and approval of council.
It's payable.
I make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Seconded. Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, is there any more discussion? You need a?
Councilor Howard?
Aye.
Councilor Locke?
Aye.
Councilor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sagala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
The consent agenda?
Counsel, Mr. Mayor, can you move your mic up a little bit?
Better?
Okay, we will have citizen comments that do not have to do with the Valley Three Theater. City Council welcomes your unscheduled comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes and council will not take action at the same meeting. Those are anybody out here with citizen comments other than the Valley Three? Okay. So we'll go to scheduled appearances. Citizen comments for City Council will welcome your unscheduled comments. Please limit comments to three minutes, council will not take action at this meeting. If your comments pertain to the Valley Three Theater, then please be sure you sign in on the back, back there, Barry. Sergeant, back there. Please make sure that you sign in and you will be called upon during the scheduled appearances. Okay, we will give the two folks that scheduled Buffalo Broadcasting, you'll have five minutes to present an overview of your proposal. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Counsel. And here's the radio guy with no working mics.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, thank you for this opportunity and welcome to all these people who have showed up tonight. I think that's outstanding. And I wanted to start out just for my own edification, if I could, ask for a quick show of hands, who's here tonight that did not see any of the proposals? Couple, all right, that's good. So this recap will be truly a recap, I think that's outstanding. I want to thank Carolyn and the volunteer board for what they've done over the long period of time. They really have done an outstanding job and I think they deserve a round of applause, honestly. We would not be sitting here tonight if not for that board, I promise you that. So there are a couple of things that I wanted to bring to everybody's attention that we will do with our proposal. We will be demographically diverse with our program and include things for senior citizens like a movie matinee, Spanish movie nights with Hispanic movies. Thursday night is the new Friday night, so we will have Thursday night movie matinees, Friday afternoon matinees to cater to the kids who don't have school and to the parents who are trying to get them out of their hair. We will have Saturday matinees, Sunday matinees, free family movie matinees. We'll put sports on the big screen like the Broncos, the NFL Sunday Ticket, playoff hockey games, big fights, that sort of thing. Creed Repertory Theater nights, touring comedy nights, open mic nights, community theater, live concerts from the region's best musicians, Christian movies. And I wanted to just give you a couple of ideas that we have that were, we were going to do, but unfortunately we couldn't put together fast enough. One of them was, I actually had talked to Barbara about doing a movie tomorrow on Good Friday and having people go to her new store there to pick up free tickets to see The Passion of the Christ on Good Friday. And unfortunately, we couldn't put it together fast enough to figure out how much that was all going to cost. But ideas like that and another idea that I would love to put together, whether I get the theaters or not, is to show the Pearl Harbor movie and then bring in our esteemed resident over at Homelake who was there at Pearl Harbor and just turned 103, I think. And bring George in for a question and answer period afterwards. Those are the kinds of things that I really want to try to do. Let's see, I have said that we will have alcohol or we're going to at least apply for a permit for a beer and wine permit. There's been some questions since I said that about how we pull that off in a dark theater. And that would be something that I think is easily remedied. We could do 21 and over movie nights and we don't have to worry about it at all. Or we could do whatever the suggestion is. These things happen all over the country and we're not the first to do that. And so whether it's designated sections or whatever the case be, we would absolutely comply with whatever those directions might be. I want to mention a couple of movies quick, so Spotlight, Moonlight, The Shape of Water, Green Book, Parasite, Nomadland, Coda, and Everything Everywhere All at Once. Who thinks they might know what all those movies have in common? That's right, they all won Best Picture over the last eight years. What else do they have in common? They're all of adult themes, either PG-13 or R. And they have one more thing in common, do you know what it is? Not one of those movies played in Montevista. And if a Montevista resident wanted to see one of those Oscar-winning movies, they had to leave Montevista to go and see it somewhere else. And it's my feeling that those movies deserve to be played here in Montevista. And if we get the theaters, that's exactly what we would do. So as we look down at what the thoughts are and what the options are tonight, we have a clear choice in my mind. We have a coffee shop or radio studios in one of the small theaters. We have an outright purchase or a lease with an option to purchase. We have religious cheer or your choice of beer. We have coffee grounds, fine, or a glass of wine. We have Bible study or movies that are bloody. We are trying to create here a win-win for everybody. I think we can create a win-win for the council and a win-win for the city and a win-win for my company as well. Last thought, two last thoughts. I don't think the city can lose here with whatever decision you guys make. I, you know, if we don't get it and the Nazarene Church does, they have a great proposal and the theaters will certainly get used more than they are and I think that's the eventual goal here, right? And finally, I hear it, I'm just the caretaker. Even though I'll be the owner, I'm just the caretaker and I want to make it better for the next caretaker when he or she comes along. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Nazarene Church.
So I'm Barbara Sears and this is Pastor Chris Yoakum. He's kind of losing his voice, so we're going to tag team this a little bit. We have made a proposal for the theater for an outright purchase of $5,000. With the outright purchase, we don't have to worry about who's maintaining the theater. Who's maintaining the theater or who pays for what? Everything is in our hands once it becomes our property. We are prepared to pay for the remodels upfront. We also have some grants available that we've already looked into, which is good. We do want to play Christian and family-friendly movies. We do want to open a coffee shop like Bob said. And we would like to keep the last theater as a theater for different events coming. Anything you want to add to that, Pastor?
I would just add to that that I think Bob, he did present very good view of the contrast between the two options. But we just want to say that for us, we appreciate the council considering us and it would be an extension of our church and our ministry. It will be, it will be an outreach. And so that's definitely going to be something that will be different. As I mentioned at the last meeting, and I feel strongly about this, that people definitely need, they need hope. Entertainment's great, people are looking for us and escape these days and, you know, things are, things are difficult. And, but what people need, I mean, escape won't take you so far. What people really need is hope. And that's what our church is about, that's what we desire to do is to, is to bring hope to our community, shine a light into our community. We believe that there'll be great things that can happen. We believe there's lots of great, positive, family-friendly, biblically affirming content that will be entertaining, but also bring, bring great hope to people. And we know that God can do great things through these, through this theater if that's the choice the city council makes. We, regardless of how it goes, you know, we are, we are in support and we've already talked with Bob about collaboration and so, you know, there's no, no hard feelings either way. We're just, our church, our district is very excited about the possibility, the opportunities that could be presented. And we know that if that's the decision the city council makes, we will strive with, with all diligence and effort and God's power to bring something great to our community and to the downtown area with the coffee shop, with the various things. We know God's got, given us a great, a great vision for that. So again, we thank you for your consideration and we're excited to see what, what could happen. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Okay, citizens will be given three minutes to ask questions or make comments. And then the applicants will have a minute to respond to the questions. So if you do want to say something, we need you to sign that sheet in the back. And I will start with this one that I have. So if there's any more names on that, so if you are going to comment on this, you have to definitely have been signed in, okay? So first one is Amanda Andrews. Amanda, when you get up there, please state your name.
Adjust this because I'm sure.
We know it's you, but.
Hear me okay on the?
Get a little bit closer.
My name is Amanda Andrews, I see many familiar faces in here tonight. And originally, I was not going to come and speak about this, but I felt I needed to. I honestly like the community of the Nazarene. I shop at the thrift store. When I first moved to the valley, I had to reach out to them for help when they still had their utility assistance program running. However, I do not feel that their proposal would be the most beneficial for the entirety, the entirety of the community, not just of Montevista, but of the valley as a whole, including the tourism that we see in the summer. There is a very huge portion of the valley that identifies either as alternative Christian and they prefer to not have structured worship or just not Christian at all. And it would be somewhat alienating to us to have that theater option taken from us when I do know there is the Sixplex in Alamosa and the drive-in. But it's not always feasible when you've got a baby and a toddler and an 11-year-old to drive all the way to Alamosa or go to the drive-in where you have to sit in your car for the whole movie. It's a more family-friendly experience to be able to stay in your little town. I would not necessarily be upset if the Nazarene got it because they are a good community, they're giving and they're generally there when you need them. I just don't think it would be the best option for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. We'll go with Ty Byrger.
I'm a little taller. My name is Ty Byrger. I am the founder and current council president for the San Luis Valley Heathens Organization. I'm also an advocate for heathenry as well as paganism.
Excuse me, Ty, speak a little closer to that, please.
Our group, and I have to say this because you search up anything related to my faith and the first thing that pops up is the Ossetra True Folk Assembly. We are in no way associated with them. We don't believe in anything that they have to believe in. But I'm here on behalf of the SLV Heathens Council and our members. The plan for the Valley Three Theater presented by Bob Richards was very well thought out. Bob's plan not only gives us a very honest assessment of the cost and refurbishment needed to revitalize the theater, but also addresses the risks both to himself and the town of Montevista. However, the rewards far outweigh those risks. With Bob at the helm of this project, we would see a boon to business and profit to our town like never before. At the last town meeting, Coach BJ reminisces about growing up with Monty being a very prosperous town. I remember that as well, and like my children to grow up with that. Bob's plan is inclusive of all demographics and will not bring, not only bring more variety to our town, but also complement what we currently have. And as for the plan presented by the Nazarene Church, the well-intentioned they may be, I'm reminded of a quote from the Icelandic sagas, which states, "To not expect to make headway with a frail sailcloth." Thank you.
Thank you. Sheila Wallach? Is that right?
That's right, Sweet Thunder. Hi, everybody. This is history in the making right here. Wow.
My name is Sheila Sweet Thunder Wallach. And I have for, I don't know, probably, what is it? The last seven months or more have been volunteering with the Valley Theater in support of glorifying it for the entire community as a pinnacle hub that is in the center of our town. And a historic place that brings about entertainment for all of us. So I got to help and volunteer and at least just quickly do some Christmas decorations so the prosperity at the theater could kick up during the holiday season. So I volunteered for that. And then I've been looking at different places and different things and looking at historic renovation through the Turner Classic Movie Channel. So there's all sorts of different things that we can do to support the renovation and possibly get these different programs to glorify and reestablish our theater for its highest good and for the community's highest good. So I have visual proposals for sprucing up the front of the Valley Theater, the inside, working as having had a background in movies, theater, production, event coordinating, marketing, interior and exterior design. And I grew up with my father's company that was in construction. So I'm familiar with a lot of the different aspects to support our beautiful theater in being more of a, of a center stone. And I'm also familiar with and was invited to Montevista to help with economic revitalization. So I'm here as a community member to volunteer and support the why we want to do this, not the how, but the why. And what are our guesses and what are we proud of as a community? So thank you and I look forward to supporting in any way I can with whatever proposal is accepted. Thank you and I love living in Montevista.
Katie Kelly?
Hi, can you guys hear me? Hi.
Stay kind of close, Kelly.
Hi, my name is Katie Kelly. My husband and I own a business on Adam Street and I'm also the founder and executive director of Mystic Valley Art Council. And I wanted to share my thoughts on the Valley Three movie theater proposals. And first off, the Valley Theater in my eyes, I mean, it sits in the middle of Adam Street in the downtown business district. It is a place that should shine as a central building on this block. It is the only theater downtown Montevista. It's where people have gone for date night for years. It is where there's been a yearly tradition of going to see the Rocky Horror Picture Show for Halloween. It is a place where small film festivals have been shown. People come into the theater from different communities around the valley. As a business owner, I see we need more businesses downtown. We need revenue-making businesses. This is what Bob Richards of Buffalo Broadcasting has proposed for the theater. An exciting new business with the possibility of live theater performances, live music, comedy shows, movies and more. I see this as a wonderful opportunity for some collaboration possibly in the future with the art council, of course. I feel that Bob has a good business plan that would help the revitalization and economy of the downtown area. Bob's plan is inclusive and includes a wide variety of offerings for community members and tourists. I mean, how cool would it be to be walking downtown and be able to stop and watch a little bit of live radio broadcasting? I think that would be a draw, not only to our community members, but to the tourists. And speaking on tourism, I recently attended the REC Community Workshop here at Sky High. What I came out of that meeting feeling was that the community members who attended wanted to see Montevista revitalized and thrive. We discussed creating more inviting and accessible recreational and outdoor activities. We discussed inclusivity and diversity. We discussed how to increase tourism and how to get tourists to stay here instead of driving straight through to Pagosa and onward. I feel the community sharing during that time should be taken in consideration on the movie theater proposals. Anyways, again, I, my, my concern with the church proposal is that it is not, a Christian-based ministry theater is not inclusive of the whole Montevista and whole San Luis Valley community. And I would like to see, as a business owner, on the same block as a theater, I wish to see the theater as a thriving, revenue-generating, inclusive business that attracts more foot traffic downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Douglas Crow Wolf?
Hello, Mayor, Counsel, everybody hear me okay?
A little closer.
How's that? I'm speaking as an indigenous business owner. As me and my wife Katie have our business downtown, we have looked at both business proposals and good and bad on both sides. I feel as far as business choices, Bob Richards does have the best business plan for downtown. It's all-inclusive, which includes our native population of the valley, not just Montevista. I bring the indigenous shows to Monty every year, as well as planning the powwow for the September. I think an all-inclusive plan for downtown to grow businesses, to bring more business downtown and revenue for this town is more important than anything else that I'm seeing downtown. We've been downtown three years, we watch what's going on and we do need more businesses downtown. We want to see downtown grow as well as the town. That's what we're here for. And that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you, sir. Sarah Noler?
Hi, my name is Sarah Noler. Um, I have lived in Montevista since 2019. I brought my family to the San Luis Valley for a job after grad school in 2017. We picked Montevista to buy a house because we loved the schools, the cute downtown, the reasonably priced houses at that time, um, and the community. I have watched quite a few businesses come and go in my short time here. I have listened to both presentations for the Valley Three Theater and talked to some of those involved. I would like the city council to support the proposal for Buffalo Broadcasting. The proposal put forth by the Valley Church of the Nazarene is not a good business proposal. The reason the city is exploring options for the theater is that it currently is not a profitable business. The church's proposal is not a new plan. They want to run it similar to the way it is currently being run by volunteers. They also want to only show Christian, G, or family-friendly movies that meet their beliefs. This means that if our family wants to go to see a current film year-round, like Super Mario Bros. or Top Gun, we're gonna have to travel to Alamosa. We will be spending money there. We will probably also get some coffee there, maybe some dinner, but all of that tax revenue is gonna go to Alamosa. Bob's plan will keep people in our town to spend money here. His plan will surely bring more people to our town, increasing our tax revenue. The tax, um, that tax revenue can be used to better our community, pave our streets, clean water, et cetera. If you want a coffee shop, please visit one that is already here. The polished bean is delicious. I only wish they would stay open longer because I love a latte in the afternoon as I'm going home to get my family ready and off to soccer practice or off to their part-time job. Um, the bowling alley is looking great. We have wonderful restaurants, library, um, small retail shops, a dance studio, and we even have a furniture store now. Um, there are monthly art walks and seasonal celebrations like Cinco de Mayo, the Potato Festival, and of course, the Sky High Stampede. All of these things are just a sample of the events where families can come and enjoy what our town has to offer. I was hoping to just keep this about economic revitalization. But we can't ignore the fact that their church's mission is to spread their church's beliefs. They are not interested in earning a profit just spreading their religion, a religion that does not tolerate everyone. We have many churches here in Montevista. The Valley Church of the Nazarene already has two or three businesses now with their thrift stores. They can do everything that is in their proposal at their church. As a parent of an LGBTQ young adult, we must consider carefully the addition of another place where a family like ours will not be welcome. They may say that they want to love and respect everyone, but my child has been called mentally ill by one of their church members. Yes, that is just one of their, one person from their church, but their church does not accept my child or the many other LGBTQ youth and adults here in the valley. If this is what the Nazarene Church teaches, having another venue for their ministry will not serve or value our entire community. I want to have a place that is welcoming and kind to all of the citizens of this lovely town and Bob's plan will be what is best for Montevista. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Jody Rutherford?
I'm Jody Rutherford. Am I close enough?
Yes.
Um, I'm a elementary teacher and grew up in Montevista and I just would want to go with the Nazarene proposal just for more family-friendly venue for our town, that the whole family could go to something and, um, I don't want to say a lot of things. That was just my vote.
Thank you. Chris Yocum?
Wasn't sure much I'd be able to say before, so I did sign up, so. Um, I do just want to say that my heart is sad about the one comment. I would hope that no one would hear such a thing from our, our church. We are, we would strive. We would always want to be welcoming and generous and gracious and loving to everyone. We are, our call because of our mission to affirm a biblical worldview and we will have, we will do that if we do get it. We will do that. We believe that's the most loving thing to do. We know everybody's got a worldview. We've got a worldview. Everybody's got a worldview and that worldview informs them on various issues. Our worldview informs us on various issues, but in no way does that ever, do we ever want that to come across as any way thing, you know, anything unloving or ungracious to people. And we are striving. We know that, uh, the church oftentimes does have a bad reputation and, uh, we're, we're no different than, than any other church in that we are full of flawed people. Our desire is to, to love this community, to bring something good and quality to this community. You can see that in the thrift stores. That's our desire. Again, our desire is to bring, bring hope to people. Yes, we may, we may have people that disagree and, and, but in no way is that, are we going to create an atmosphere that is in any way unloving. Just because we disagree, I, I would hope that that would not lead people to believe that we are unwelcoming or unloving to, to folks, because we do love people. We really do. That is our motive. That is our motivation. That's why we, we do what we do. That's why we say what we say and that's why we believe what we believe. Yes, we do have a different worldview than many, many others, but our worldview also tells us that we are to love everyone and try to seek in every way to be welcoming and gracious. And that's our, our desire. Yes, ours is not a business proposal. Ours is a, a ministry proposal. It is a way to expand our, our ministry and we are seeking to do that, but we just want city council and the, the city to know how much we, we care about this community. We have, there is great risk, as, as Bob has brought up in his proposal, there is great risk. That's why he, you know, wants to do a lease, lease option. We considered that as well. We have many in our board that voted that they would, they didn't want to do it unless we did a lease, lease, lease option. We decided, our church decided, we were, we're going forward with it. We're gonna take the risk, whatever that, that comes, because we've got resources we're gonna bring to bear to try to bring something good and quality to our community that we have blessing to our community. Thank you.
Gabriel Jarden?
Good evening. My name is Gabriel Jarden and I have been a resident of Montevista for a very long time. I'm a graduate of Montevista High School from 1998 and after going off to college and living in another state for a short period of time, I came back. It saddens my heart that Montevista has lost so many businesses over the years, yet I am encouraged that so many new business owners have chosen to make Montevista their home and are fighting hard to bring business back to the area. The theater is only part of that, but it is one that is, that has the potential to make a serious impact for the betterment of the city, the other businesses, and the people in general. At the last meeting, two proposals were put forth. Simply put, the first proposal by Mr. Richards was the most convincing in my opinion. Looking back on my past experience, I have helped manage a 12-plex movie theater in Washington State that could show up to 24 movies a night. Without question, I understand just how difficult such an endeavor is. However, Bob has more than demonstrated his understanding of what it will require and what is needed to make it successful. While the second proposal by the Nazarene Church is well-intentioned, they already possess the facilities to do what they have proposed. I have been in their gym and multi-use areas on several occasions and I know with a little creative manipulation, they can put in a coffee shop. Moreover, their sanctuary is large enough to hold screenings of any movies they would like. To put it plainly, they do not need the theater. It is logistically unnecessary and besides that, and with all due respect, they do not know just how difficult it will be to take care of and manage it. Volunteers will certainly not be enough. Be that as it may, I would like to offer the suggestion that they purchase the property right next to the church and either renovate it for a coffee shop or demolish it and build a new one. It's an eyesore. It would beautify the area. It would be quiet and it would allow for the utilization of their existing parking lot. The church's spokesperson last time explained they already have the financial ability to undertake such a task. Thus, it stands to reason that it would be a better use of resources to buy and/or build than to take care of the theater. Finally, at the last meeting, the second proposal stated it was not interested in putting another business downtown, but rather they wanted to invest in the citizens. Yet, new businesses are exactly what the city needs. They are what the citizens need and they are what existing businesses need. This reminds me of Proverbs 27:17. As iron sharpens iron, so one man sharpens another. Where one business is successful and encourages the other businesses downtown, so too will the other businesses succeed as well as the city of Montevista. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Graves?
I had this under three minutes before, but nerves might get the best of me. Hello, my name's Jennifer Graves. I come here this evening as a new business owner.
Jennifer?
Is it?
Turn that mic up.
How do I tell you that? Hang on, can we start over?
We need the tech guy.
I may have gotten it.
Did you get it?
I think I got it.
Okay.
Is that close enough? Okay. Um, yeah. I come here this evening as a new business owner. Literally two days ago, I officially opened my art gallery on Adam Street to the public. I had my choice of cities to open my business in and was wooed by several. I chose Montevista for the simple reason of the opportunity for growth it possesses. In my mind, Montevista is on the precipice of becoming a destination town for recreation and tourism. It already sits on the only main access road across the bottom of the state. Right now, if you blink, you might miss this, but I wholeheartedly believe this is about to change. I attended the event for the recreational and economic development of our city. The idea was to come together to find avenues of revenue streams that would bring in tourism and begin the development of our area. The time was taken to apply for the grant to bring these experts here. We were one of only 25 cities in the United States that was accepted for this grant. It was a tremendous honor to be chosen. The attendance was amazing. So many people from the community and city were there shoulder to shoulder, working together to find ways for our little area to develop and prosper. The revamping of the downtown area to appeal to tourism was discussed at length. To bring in those tourists, there needs to be activities, places to explore, businesses to discover, and memorabilia to be purchased. So, I'd like to start by saying that Adam Street is in a commercial zone. I will give you a couple of definitions of what that actually means. First, a commercial business is an activity conducted by companies to provide goods or services for sale. Commercial businesses can also be defined as retail stores. Second, the definition of a commercial zone. Commercial zones are areas of a city, township, or municipality specifically set aside for commercial business. Commercial areas are areas, districts, or neighborhoods composed of commercial businesses and commercial buildings that may house a strip mall or shopping centers. The first proposal by Bob is the epitome of one such business. The second proposal, however, is neither commercial business-focused nor in any way commercial. It does not provide a product that has been manufactured in any way. The proposal from the Nazarene said they have the funds to revamp the theater. Why not revamp the large spaces they already possess? Um, let's see here. What do they want to do at the theater that they already do at their church? Also, a coffee shop. The Nazarene Church offices building already has a drive-through window. Perfect for a coffee drive-through. They also just remodeled the thrift store. They could have put in a coffee shop that would have been right on the main drag. I was sad to hear, and I quote, "We are not going to put another business in downtown Montevista." So that means that they are going to be under their 501(c)(3) where volunteers will be there during open hours. Volunteers don't create income, jobs, or personal tax revenue and a 501(c)(3) doesn't pay city revenue. I mean, don't get me wrong, if I could buy the theater for $5,000 and never pay taxes on it again, I mean, I would love that. Sorry, but, uh, I just need to, uh, one last thing. So, no business revenue for the city, no new job incomes, no taxes whatsoever. I just want to make sure I'm following that correctly. Thank you.
Thank you. Reina Bowser? Yes. Yes, hang on just one second, Reina. Yes, Barb, you may. Please come up.
As a 501(c)(3), we still do pay sales tax. We, we do pay sales tax. We do not pay property tax, but we do collect sales tax and pay, whether it be through the coffee shop, sales of vending at the theater, we would pay sales tax. So we do offer something to Montevista in a way of revenue, so.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff, and all in attendance this evening. My name is Reina Bowser. I reside and work in Montevista. I'm here this evening to speak in support of Bob Richards' proposed plan for the Valley Theater. The members of the Nazarene Church have certainly proven themselves to be good stewards of all of their endeavors in Montevista over the years. However, I believe their plan for the Valley Theater focuses too narrowly on a certain demographic. And frankly, I've heard some say that choosing one of the proposals over the other will be about being a Christian or not being a Christian, but it is not. It is about what is good for the growth of our downtown. It will help set the mood for what happens next in downtown Montevista. The Valley Theater belongs to all of its citizens and each of us should be able to enjoy it in the future. The Valley Theater is a cornerstone of this community with deep roots. George Keloff Senior and his wife Edna took great pride in making the Valley Theater a place for all to attend and enjoy with family and friends. Bob's plan has the same intent, but expands it to a wide variety of entertainment. Some of those plans include activities that no one else in the valley and indeed the state have ever done. My husband Jim and I have gotten to know Bob over the last few years. He is a very savvy businessman who successfully, over a period of years, became the owner of his three radio stations. He is a deep thinker, but is also funny and very creative. I have no doubt Bob's plan will complement existing businesses in downtown Montevista and make it a place where people want to visit. It is also a place that will provide unique entertainment for visitors, including the thousands of folks who will attend conferences at this extraordinary new facility. Those visitors will no doubt remember the uniqueness of Bob's business and many of them will share their experiences with their family and friends when they get back home. This all bodes very well for downtown Montevista as well as the community as a whole. I hope you will think of a variety of experiences Bob is offering us with this proposal and give us the opportunity to enjoy them. As an aside, I was thinking this afternoon about how long we've been in business, 34 years on the corner down there. Um, things have changed a great deal over those three decades and I say, let's go with the flow and let's see what the next generation has to offer. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Reina. If anybody did walk in late and wanted to say something and did not get signed in, please go back to that back table and sign in if you want to say something about this. Do you want to try to fix that mic real quick before we call the next one up? Please, sir? Thank you. Deb Haverfield?
Good evening. My name is Deb Haverfield. I'm a fourth-generation native born and bred here in the valley. I've seen the valley go through a lot. Thank you.
Might just have to pull it out and hold it up there if that will work.
Okay, thank you. And I do have to agree with Pastor, thank you, I have to agree with Pastor Yocum that I do, I've seen the valley go through a lot. I've lived here a lot of years. I won't say how many. Um, and I do believe that the valley needs hope and I think that we can, uh, I do agree with the Nazarene Church proposal, that we can reach out with that. I do see them doing retail and knowing how to run a business in the valley and in Montevista. The thrift store is very successful. A lot of that money goes right back into the community through donations and help and so forth for the community. We have Open Night Gym for the, uh... We have open night gym for the junior and high school kids at the, on Friday nights, so that they can get some entertainment outside of the streets. I do have concerns with Mr. Richards' proposal as to why a lease. If things don't work out well within the first year, we're going to be right back here again with trying to figure out what to do with this. What if there's problems in the remodel? If there's asbestos found? If there's structural problems? Will the city be responsible for that? I guess I like the proposal where there's an outright purchase and then the city no longer has that responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Dawn Nolan.
My name is Dawn Nolan. I'm a citizen of Montevista, and I don't really have a lot of comments. One, I don't, you know, the liquor problem, I see that could be a problem, but I'm sure they can work something out on that. They deserve liquor there. I guess my first concern is, it is my understanding that that building needs a lot of work. And is there, do both of them have a timeline as to when they could complete that work? Or would it, would they just want to move in and then, when they can get around to it, start doing some of the improvements needed? And I just think that they should respond as to have a timeline as to when they could make the repairs that are needed, accessibility, whatever else is needed in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nolan. Each of you got a minute to respond to Mr. Nolan. So, Barb, if you would like to stand up first.
So we did provide a timeline in our proposal originally. We would move in and show movies immediately. We would begin renovations of the bathrooms immediately. We hoped to have those ready, all three bathrooms, in one year. We showed the coffee shop in 18 months, and the third theater in two years. So we did have a timeline.
Thank you, Barb. Bob?
Well, it's an excellent question, and it's exactly why we are doing a lease-purchase arrangement. In my mind, the issue for me was, and the reason I didn't want to do an outright purchase, is because we have no idea what's in there, right? There could be asbestos everywhere, and unfortunately, there's nobody in the valley that does that kind of testing. So the idea was, let's do a lease-purchase. During the lease period, we can bring some of these programs to the community while we are educating ourselves about what is exactly going on in that theater, and then we can perhaps, after the period of one year, purchase the theater outright when we know exactly what it's going to cost, and we can begin all of the modernization and remodeling at that point. So, it's a great question. It's a, it's a, it's a question all the way around. Nobody knows what's in there, and we need to figure that out before I'd be willing to spend $400,000 on remodeling that place.
David Steinar.
Good evening. My name is David Steinar, and I was born and raised here in Montevista. I've lived here most of my life, except when I went away to college, and right out of college, I had a job that took me away to Texas for about seven years, but I then moved back here. I am a business owner here in Montevista. I own Monty Glass Shop. Been in that business for almost 30 years, and I've seen changes in this city as well. The proposals that were given, I think, are both very good. Bob's is definitely a business proposal. His main objective is to make a profit, as in most businesses are. His, uh, problem that I see is, one, uh, two things, is one, is he's going to want to lease it first, instead of purchase it outright. The other is, the concern I have is the liquor license. We have a lot of businesses here in town that already provide liquor to their establishment. Almost every restaurant has liquor. There we have two liquor stores here in town as well. The Bowling Alley also provides liquor. And I don't see that as a plus for Montevista to have another place that has liquor outlet, especially when I'm bringing a family to watch a movie, and somebody's over here getting drunk. That's not important to them to watch this movie, but it is to me and my kids. So I kind of have a problem with liquor being served in the movie house. The Nazarene thrift store does provide jobs. We have 26 employees down there currently, and we pay taxes on all those 26 employees. They take federal tax out, they take all those taxes out for all those employees, and like she said, we do pay sales tax on that as well. We don't know a lot about running a theater. We would learn how to run a theater. We would probably also have a volunteer network to begin with, and then, as our thrift store started out with a volunteer network, we, like I said, we have 26 employees now that live here in town. As we progressed, as we grew, we would put in full-time positions, more than likely, that would be a paid position, because not all of us have the time to go out there and volunteer all the time to get some things done. But the basis of it is, we don't know what we need until we get into it, find out what's required, and so that's going to take some time and understanding as well. So, I don't envy you guys sitting here. It's a tough choice for you, and I know you want the best for our community, as we all do. If we are unfortunate enough not to get that, we are no means going to be holding grudge. We won't be sad. We'll try and help him as much as we can to make that profitable as well. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Ariel Chomi. I hope I said that right.
Hi, thank you. I'm Ariel Chomi. I'm a resident of Montevista. I would just like to speak in support of Bob Richards' proposal. After listening to both proposals on the recording of the last council meeting, I think Bob's proposal has some really interesting and exciting opportunities for live theater, live comedy, live music, lots of things that would attract a wide, folks from a lot of different demographics, not only from Montevista, but all across the valley. I think it's, as other folks have said, it's more inclusive. It will draw a wider group of people, and I think it will help revive downtown as well. So, just wanted to express my support for that. Also, a few folks have mentioned the serving of alcohol in the theater. I just want to say, if you go to any other, you know, big city with these types of activities, that's pretty common to be able to get a beer or a glass of wine to take into the movie with you. So, thanks.
Thank you. Is there any more signatures back there? Thank you, ma'am. Cheryl Santi.
Hello. I really don't know how to say what great comments were made in respect to both of them. You guys do have a tough job, but I think it is up to the city at this point to make a business decision, and I think we need someone with a business plan. We've, the volunteers that have kept this open over the years have done a wonderful job, but we can't go into another volunteer position that would be the Church of Nazarene with volunteers, because it's a big thing, and they do have spaces to do the things they want to do. I think they could coordinate with Bob to have movies on occasion that they would want to show, and I love the Church of the Nazarene. I support it 100%, but I think this has to be a business deal, and I think we need the sales tax, which I know that you do most of it, but we also need the property tax, and we need someone who has the business acumen that Bob Richards has, and he's proven that, running a radio station, or three of them, or however many. I wish I would have heard his whole proposal. I didn't think it started till 6:30, so I thought it was on time, but from everything I've heard in the city, from different remarks, I think, this is exciting to me. I've done a number of businesses in Montevista over the years, a number of them, and it's a tough thing to do a business, and it's a lot of money to get started, and it doesn't pay out for a while, and if that place does have asbestos, you'll be lucky not to have the responsibility to do it. And I, I think that it doesn't have that. I think asbestos has been way too big of a deal, but it still is. But I just think that we are looking for business. If you look down the street during the week, or even on the weekend, and you don't see that Valley Theater lights on, it is dead. And it has to be open on a regular basis, it has to be run as a business, it has to have someone that knows business doing it, and as much as I love the Church of the Nazarene and respect everything they've done, I think the comments are really for a business venue that could be entertainment for adults, for children. I think having alcohol is not, I think it's a good thing. I think people don't have to get drunk, and if they do, they'll have to be kicked out. But I think that it's nice to come on a Friday afternoon after work, sit down, have a drink, watch a movie, and stay in town and spend your money here, and not have to go to Palomosa where you can buy dinner, buy your groceries, and buy everything else. The city will never make it if we don't do something to support it in a big way. Thank you, Bob, for doing that.
Kenneth Sears.
Thank you, council members. My name is Kenneth Sears, and I'd like to go at this from an economic point of view. As a taxpayer in Montevista, I'm curious as to how long the city of Montevista would be willing to subsidize a theater. If you're wanting to let it go or get out from the management of it, it seems like you're still going to be involved with it if you're somewhat of a partnership, and I appreciate Bob's presentation, because we all would like activities and shows and things to come to town, but it takes money, and it takes some backing to do that, and I'm not sure where that funding would come from. We just closed down a coffee shop in the middle of Main Street with a restaurant for lack of participation, and I realize that that, to say we're going to do grand things is wonderful, but we still have to have the participation of people to do it and to pay to do it. And so the economics, if the city says, well, we'll take one proposal over the other, I think the economics is the issue, whether you're saying, well, we'll do that, and if it needs this, we'll support it, or we'll put up the money to bring in this group or whatever. That is the question I have. Thank you.
Yes, sir. You have one minute.
Well, yet another outstanding question. And the answer is that the lease purchase affords me the opportunity to zero in on exactly what kind of money we need to finance the theaters. As I said in my proposal, it could be anywhere from about $150,000 to $402,000. Well, that's quite a difference in terms of what the financial situation is and how I would go about paying for it. I was also at the RERC meetings in this very room, and I learned that the theater is eligible for, for federal funds that would backstop any loan that I would be able to go and get. So, if a local bank gives me the funds to do what I need to do in the theater, that loan could be backstopped by the federal government, which makes that loan way more attractive to give.
Okay. That's all we have that has signed in, so now we'll have, the staff presents the comments that came in the email to the city clerk.
Good evening, council. I have four emails that came in, and they did come in prior to 3 o'clock today. The first one is Angela Wagner. Came in on March 25th. First of off, "First off, our family are frequent attenders to the Valley Three Theater. We want to keep our dollars local, so we try to make it a point to go there. Unfortunately, we are unable to attend the next council meeting, but we would like to share our input to the citizens of Montevista. We love both proposals. As a Christian family, we love the Nazarene's plan, but as Montevista community members, we think Bob's plan will be most beneficial to our local community. If there's one thing we would add to Bob's proposal, it would be to add a family Christian movie night into his plan. Ultimately, that would be the best of both proposals. We think that the Montevista community would be better served with Bob's plan as a whole. If we want to bring the majority of people business revenue from in and out of town, it has to reach many demographics, which his plan has laid out quite well. People can come here to eat, shop, and maybe spend the night if they're from out of town, supporting several businesses at the same time. My dad, who's a resident at the Veterans Center, said that they're always looking for activities to do. They've actually driven them all the way to Creed just to go to the theater there. So having local activities would save them a trip or two. We definitely think that they would utilize the senior matinee along with other senior citizens living here. Also, Bob's idea with using food trucks, live music, comedy, et cetera, is something this town really needs and would be a great attraction to bring people from outside our community. We think perhaps the Nazarene Church would be better serve the community through expanding and converting one of their current properties with the theater for their own purpose and to use it for their proposal. We feel like their plan will only benefit some, but not the whole community. Thank you for all your faithful service to our local community. Sincerely, Brian and Angela Wagner." The next one came in at April 6th at 9:00 a.m. It's from Laura Conchelos. "After watching the two proposals, my family, and my proposal feeling is that Bob Richards' and the radio station have a plan to use a theater in a broader fashion that will be beneficial to the greater number of the people in the San Luis Valley than the Nazarene's plan. While I appreciate the Nazarene would keep movies running right off the bat, and I like the idea of the coffee shop, I like the option of seeing movies other than family Christian films at the theater. Limiting the type of movies the theater shows may also stop special screenings by local groups. Many great films, and neither family-friendly or Christian, and the Nazarene might still be able to offer their films at the theater under Bob Richards' proposal. I think using the theater to show both professional and especially local sports is great. I love that they already cover local high school sports on the radio. From my perspective, The Fox has done well under Bob Richards. It sounds as though the space can be used, useful to the radio station, and I really enjoy the wide variety of information and entertainment shared on the radio since he keeps it." and I really enjoy the wide variety of information and entertainment shared on the radio since he took over. I do understand why the city would be hesitant to lease the theater to Bob Richards, and don't feel like the city should be responsible for funding the theater further. But perhaps we, he would consider purchasing it outright. If it's not apparent, I would like to see the theater go to Bob Richards. Next one came in April 6th at 12:41. Eunita, I won't be able to attend the meeting tonight, but I would like to give some input. I believe the best use for the Valley Three Theater for the citizens of Montevista would be to keep it securely based and to allow the broader scope of use. This would be accomplished by choosing the Buffalo Broadcasting as the new owner. Thank you, Mark Renshaw. And then the last one came in on April 4th. It is from Kelly Wedger. Uh, she had been contacted by Heidi Wong, who is the owner of the Sawatch Movie Theater, who has not reopened since COVID. And they just wanted whoever is going to be given the theater or granted the proposal, that she has a digital projector available for sale.
So all citizen comments and questions are now closed. Any of the council have any questions? Thank you to both applicants. We really appreciate you taking the time to do this. So. Both great, great proposals. So, council, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to begin negotiations with Buffalo Broadcasting toward their proposal, though. One-year lease.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded to, uh, go with Buffalo Broadcasting with his proposal. Is there any more questions? Comments? Yes, ma'am?
So pertaining to your, your motion, Councilman Lorenz, oh, sorry.
Councilman Lorenz, pertaining to your motion, is it a flat-out one-year lease? Or is it contingent upon the city attorney and myself coming to an agreement with Mr. Richards?
You're to negotiate for a one-year lease. If that's not acceptable to Mr. Richards, then that's not my proposal. I'm offering him a one-year lease. That's my motion. Lease with the option to purchase, obviously.
Okay. We've got the motion and the second. Is there any more discussion?
Uh, could I get Council Lorenz to repeat, I want to make sure I clear on the motion.
Mic up.
Is, is the motion to accept the lease or to negotiate the lease?
To negotiate a one-year lease with an option to purchase.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, Eunita?
Councilor Howard?
Yes.
Count. Aye. Count.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
I will excuse myself from the vote as I'm a member of the Nazarene Church.
Motion. For yes, one.
Motioning to approve the city manager to move forward with a negotiation with Buffalo Broadcasting for a one-year lease with the option to purchase.
Did everybody hear that all right? Okay. We'll go on to contracts, agreements, and leases. Awarding of the installation, installation bid for the Kids Connection Air Conditioning Alcon. You guys really don't have to leave.
So, good evening, council. Is that better? Can everybody hear me? Um, I, I'm in front of you tonight to ask for council to award the bid to Alcon Construction for the installation of five air conditioning units on the Kids Connection building. On February 21st of 2023, I published an RFQ for the installation of five A- air conditioning units at Kids Connection. It was advertised, and bids were received until March 15th. Whereas those bids received were opened in a public meeting according to our bid advertisements, and the bids were read into record. There was one bidder for the project, and that was Alcon Construction. Their RFQ included all the elements that were required in the bid, and they listed staff that would be part of the project. That staff has had previous experience with cities' projects, including this building here. And, um, from previous experience, um, staff is recommending award of the contract to Alcon. The bid is for $15,243.75, and staff's recommendation is to award the bid to Alcon Construction for that sum and to allow the city manager, G.G. Dennis, to sign the contract. Any questions?
I made the motion to award the contract to Alcon Construction.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to award the bid to Alcon Construction for the Kids Connection Air Conditioning System. Is there any more discussion? Eunita?
Councilor Howard?
Yes.
Councilor Loeb? Aye. Councilor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the contract for the Kids Connection Air Conditioning to Alcon Construction in the amount of $15,234.75, and allow city manager to sign.
Thank you.
Do we have a financial report tonight? Just making sure.
Mayor Becker?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, you did skip over J.
Yes. I'm sorry about that.
Council, um, before you is resolution number J1. And I'm sorry for the, um, last-minute addition to the agenda. This has to do with the timing of what's going on in the legislature right now. And this has concerns with Senate Bill 213 that, uh, was introduced by Senator Marino. And this is a, a harsh, harsh, um, helmet, or hamlet, I guess, to municipal government and municipal, um, charter communities. The governor is trying to tie local zoning and elevate it to take it away from us and our planning commissions and putting it in the hands of the Department of Local Affairs. And the bill was actually heard today. CML, that, for the audience, that's Colorado Municipal League, asked that we get, um, agreements from our communities to go ahead and submit this because they've got, uh, a large contingency trying to squish this dead. I did talk to the main lobbyist for the Colorado Municipal League today. She said it was in hearing. She says right now it's not favorable on the, for the governor's staff. However, they're saying that it will be heavily amended. And so we sent you a lot of information in a short amount of time because of when we got it. But this imposes top-down standards on some local governments to remove local zoning authority. Let me, let me back up. This bill, as written right now, does not impact Montevista, but it hits any community over the population of 5,000. So, you know, even if we hit 5,000 in 15 years, we would have to go by this. Despite frequent references to affordable housing, the standards do not create more affordable housing. The standards apply only to some municipalities, and then only to some in different, differing degrees. Municipalities are classified into four groups. I won't go into details on that right now. But DOLA is the big winner, I guess, in this. It has a $15 million fiscal note for them to hire more staff and figure out how they're going to regulate the state. And they can't paint us with one, you know, we all don't fit under the same paintbrush. DOLA would be responsible for issuing methodologies to develop a statewide housing needs assessment. They would also issue guidance for regional and local needs assessments. And urban municipalities and rural resort job centers must be completed, complete a housing needs assessment by December 31st of 2026. Municipalities must address manufactured and modular housing in the same manner as they would a site-built home. So, like in Montevista, with our Planning and Zoning Commission, we have areas that are zoned specifically for modular homes or for trailers. This would allow them to be, um, put on any lot that they'd like, so they would no longer fall into zoning. So, you want me to keep rattling on about the evils of this bill? I will. But, um, it's the, the strong opinion of, of me, our Planning and Zoning Staff, um, our city clerk, that you would want to be opposed to this.
So are you looking for a motion for the city to support CML? Is that what you're after here?
Correct, correct. And to sign on to this.
In opposing this particular bill.
Correct.
I would make the motion that you staff work with CML to oppose this bill.
I second that. I second that. I second that. Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded to work with CML to oppose this.
Do you want me to read the resolution?
No.
Have you all seen, okay.
Is there any more discussion? Eunita?
Councilor Howard?
Yes.
Councilor Loeb?
Aye.
Councilor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve Resolution 2023 and allow staff to work with CML to oppose CML.
Thank you. Two, one, three, okay, sorry, I had the wrong number at the beginning.
Okay, we'll do staff proposals now. IT.
Good evening, mayor and council. Going to try and keep it short and sweet as usual. So, in IT, what we did last month is we went and picked up a TV for shops at the help of Mr. Vance over there. And we got that TV hung for him and his crew. We did a phone audit, which was going over our phone list and everything, making sure all of our assets lined up, and then cleaned up anything that was not lining up or was being charged to us that we could not find. So, for instance, in the PD, we had some old hotspots lying around that was not serving us a single purpose. So those have been axed and taken out of our system. Some older equipment has been pulled, also on the PD side. They are redoing their gym room, so they asked us to pull some of the old equipment for them to get that out of there, so that way they have full use of that facility. We put out a monitor arm at the front desk for Michelle as she was having some issues with her workflow. This monitor arm allows her to swing her monitor over to her cashier's drawer while she's speaking with customers about their bills or anything of that sort. We have newer hotspots for the PD as we just pretty much redid every single hotspot that we got as we got a pretty decent deal from AT&amp;T. And they agreed to work with us so that we could renew our equipment and hopefully ax any issues that we have coming up with old equipment. And then the last thing I have for you guys is we had some computer adjustments as some computers were having issues talking to the domain. Those have been brought back into the domain, and they are talking properly again. And everyone, so far, isn't having any issues connecting. Any questions?
You're good, man. You guys do a lot of work in the background. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions for him?
Thanks for setting up everything over here.
It's no problem.
Thank you.
Thank you, council. You guys have a good night.
You too, thanks.
City manager report.
So I have some pretty good news. So, um, one, the Valley Project, Valley Three projector that, uh, went on the blink. We did submit that for an insurance claim, and we did receive payment from the insurance for $19,000.
Nice.
The, um, I've had somebody that was in the, in fact, I think it was Barb, if she's still here. She said that she was at the theater over the weekend and that the sound was perfect, there was no more popping in the speakers. They could see clearly. It seemed to have fixed a lot of things, so that's a plus. We received notice from, uh, the local Homeland Security Committee, and we had submitted for three different grants for them. We asked, one of the grants was to be able to put fencing, emergency, not emergency, security fencing around our pump houses. Another grant was to put security fencing here at Sky High, over on the west side. And that would also help with some crowd control, uh, that we experienced with, last year with Stampede. And we asked for security fencing of our police fleet. So they came back and said, you can have either the police fleet or the Sky High. And they aren't funding the whole thing. They're, we'll receive a grant for about $26,000. Staff's recommendation is that we go with the fencing here at Sky High. And so the estimate that we got for the fencing here was, I think, a little over $64,000. Uh, we believe that we can make that up through some other areas, but that this would be the primary area of concern as far as security goes and, and crowd control. As well as then the whole grant with the generator and using this as an emergency evacuation shelter, should we need that in the future. So, that's what I'm asking, is that you support us in that? If we, later we can go for, uh, apply for a different grant that would address the police fleet? And, and you all heard from Will Dan, maybe the possibilities of doing something tied in with solar over the, our police fleet. And so we would wrap that into a different package. So she wanted an official, which project do you want to submit for? Which project do you, do you want to submit for?
Your recommend, your recommend, your recommendation is here at Sky High.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
I make the motion that the, we, city manager proceed with the fencing project here, the security fencing project here at Sky High.
Seconded. Been moved and seconded to have the city manager pursue the security fencing for Sky High Park. Any more discussion? Unida?
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to allow city manager to move forward with the security fencing at Sky High.
Thank you. And then this week, Monday, the DOLA grant was, had to be submitted for the matching grant that we are asking for the generator, the RV spaces, and the shower building. And so, um, in rethinking about this, we, you know, DOLA is a 50/50 match on funding, and so we could utilize part of the FEMA grant that we're getting of $828,000 as part of this match. So, we went for the $200,000 that is a maximum under Tier One within DOLA, and this was kind of my strategy with this. Tier Ones get looked at favorably, and so I thought we had a better opportunity to get that possibly fully funded instead of going above the 200,000. So, if, assuming we get that, that'll leave a balance of our match, the city match would be 65,000. And so, I'm going to put that in our recommendation on how we spend the American Rescue Funds Act funding, and so that we're going to be bringing to you very shortly. So, we could do well with that. And then I saw Mr. Nolan was still here in the audience. Don sent an email to me and then to the chamber, and I'm not sure, a couple others, asking for support on getting the flags put in downtown. So, what the deal is, is that the, the flags that we see during the, the, you know, our holidays and Stampede and such have been done by the Montevista Kiwanis for a number of years. They retired, and it was turned over then to the Center Kiwanis. Well, they, Center Kiwanis is saying, as of the end of April, we no longer want to do this. And so, we have, I sent it out to several people. Don, there were several groups that did respond and said they needed more information, and, and Don's giving me that, so I'm really confident that we will find a good group to be, still put out our flags on the, on Veterans Day and Memorial Day and, and so, so on and so forth. So, that's a real plus. And thank you to the Kiwanis for doing this for a number of years. It's greatly appreciated.
Very much. Very much.
In fact, I asked Don also for, for a list of names of, of those that regularly participated in that, and I thought that maybe at one of our next meetings, maybe they can do the passing of the flag, and we can thank all those volunteers.
Yeah, that would be cool.
I would like to request a work session next Thursday, April the 13th, at 5:30, and this will have to do with our, our plans on spending the American Rescue dollars.
5:30?
5:30. That would work for all of you. We need to have some...
I have a conflict that night. It won't work for me.
Won't work for you? Okay. Everybody else?
I'm a, I'm a gamble.
I have to zoom in? When I could, zoom in.
Well, darn it. Let me get my calendar. Gene just said he was out, too, so... I like to try to hold these on the opposite weeks of when we have counsel, just so that it makes a little bit of a difference. So, I'm out Monday night and then Tuesday. Tuesday, I'm going to be going to Denver. We had a former state representative, Jim Snook, who was out of Alamosa, and he passed away this, this last year, and it's a tradition of whether you're in the Senate or in the House that they do a memorial in honor of their service. Well, with term limits, you don't have people that remember these people anymore, and Representative Snook and I did serve together, and so Representative Martinez invited me up to come say some, some nice words about, about Jim, so I'll be out Monday. How about Wednesday, the 12th?
Wednesday's good for me.
I'm good for Wednesday.
You're iffy.
Yeah, I'm iffy. Sorry.
Anytime between now and the next council meeting, I'll be zooming in.
Okay. Councilwoman Locke? You're good? Gene? You're good? Well, it's a work session. Okay. All right. Let, let's make it then, April the 12th, and for those of you that can't make it, I'll be happy to, to meet with you, and we can go over the plans and, and see what we want to do, so... We have almost $900,000. Okay? Any questions for me? That concludes my report. I want to thank our stamp, our, um, Sky High staff, Stephanie and Nate and Cole, for getting this all together. I want to thank Sergeant Ortega and the crew that he had here. For the audience's sake, it wasn't, it was a precautionary measure of some other concerns I had. It wasn't about our theater supporting crowds, so we're glad you're here and, and glad this room was able to be utilized for this meeting. I was really pleased with the turnout.
Very much so.
Thank you.
Thank you, G.G. Council Committee, City Commission, and Council reports. Counselor Locke?
I'd like to thank everybody that came tonight. It was nice to see a almost full room here at Sky High Events Center. I encourage our citizens to get this excited about everything going on in the city. Come to the council meetings, just like you did tonight, and, and stay and see what's going on in your town. Uh, other than that, happy Passover, happy Easter, whatever it is that you do. Good day if you don't do anything. I'm done.
It's your turn.
My turn.
Yes, sir.
Well, I just, you know, we passed a resolution, a motion, and authorized the city manager to negotiate a lease with Buffalo Broadcasting by Richards. That, you know, for me, that was a very hard decision to make, but in the end, like many spoke here, I was compelled, you know, to, I think it's a better business for our community and will bring better, more business. I, I appreciated the Nazarene Church's proposal, but I was compelled to, you know, it's more of a business proposal, and I just wanted to go on the record to say that also. The comment I have, Will Dan was working on, DJ Henley was working on a couple of things. Will Dan was looking at a solar proposal. I am working with DJ a little bit, working on some analysis of sites to put that solar in. I'm not done yet, but I will have a report eventually for that, and it won't be forever, so I will get that done, and hopefully by next council meeting, I'll have something substantive to say about that.
That sounds good to me. Thank you. Jason?
I want to thank our police officers. They get asked to do a lot of jobs. They get put in horrible positions, and they still go out every day and every night away from their families to do the job to protect our citizens, and I want to thank them for that.
Amen. Amen.
Want to second that. Don't have a whole lot. I do want to thank everybody for coming out and taking their own time out of their evening to come and sit around here. Days are starting to get nicer. Be on the lookout, look out for your neighbors. People are always out. Oh, there was something else that I forgot. So, until next time.
All right. Thank you, Victor. Along with Lauren, I appreciate both proposals. They were very good, and I really appreciate everybody that came out here tonight. It was pretty widespread, and it was great to hear from so many people. It, this is what our council meeting should be like at City Hall, packed, so it was very nice. I will second Jason's comment as well. We got to have them. We got to support them. Those guys put everything on the line for us every day so that we're all safe, and sometimes I think it's taken for granted, and it should never be, because we all want to go home, just like we came to work, right? So, with that, I will say, "Monnie's strong. Let's keep it that way," and we will recess the meeting until April 20th, 6:00 PM at City Hall.